I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in its self liberating character. Your exits, our exits are immediate, both sides. If there's an incident, you'll be voted by their hair, police, and orderly cash. With that, I open the meeting to the public at this time. You're not considered a public, sir.
Okay.
Anyone wishing to address the board at this time? You'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. I close this section. Regular meeting, minutes of the regular meeting of December 20th. There shouldn't be much of a problem to approve.
I'll move it. No, no, I have, I have a change actually. More in the end of this. It's, Phil, it's on the second page. I just think we're, it's in the discussion about Mary Nahtel coming back to work. I just think we should specify what the automatic reader system is. Perhaps we want to put meter system, meter reader?
Where am I here?
It's in the large paragraph, the second paragraph under Trustee Husgro. Three lines up from the bottom. It said, "Training during our conversion to our new automatic reader system." Perhaps we want to put what type of reader system it is? Meter reader, electrical meter reader?
On that paragraph, third?
Third, third line.
Oh, new automatic meter. Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Just so we know what that is. That's it.
Any other corrections? Not a pick and options. We'll set the minutes corrected.
Thank you.
Not me.
No, I did.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I'll open the paper, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. We all have copies of the bills. You will have any questions? I have one. We have received a tax bill from the town, which has upset me greatly. We are being taxed $3,503.41 for firing EMS on the water tank, which is in the village. And my personal innocence, we don't pay any tax bill.
This is the first time we got an understanding of the reason for the bill?
I don't either. It's probably a mistake.
An oversight, perhaps, yeah.
But it's a whole thing on the tax bill, too. You don't have anything else. We end up paying this tax bill, I'll tell you my feelings, and they're not nice. We will charge the Shattman Fire District, anytime they use water for a fire, we will charge them for ours.
That's not in this list of bills for tonight, though, right?
No, it's not on the list, but it's covered in Scotland.
Perhaps we could have failed, and then look into it with them to make sure.
Wasn't, I thought that was in the bill.
Oh, we're true.
Yeah.
It was annexed a year ago.
So it was just never corrected?
Oh, I mean.
I believe Mr. Vitterna was going to check in with Ms. Heer when he comes back. Quite mistaken.
I think so, too.
Anyway, that's my feelings. And the rest of the bills, any discussion?
Move it.
I'm sorry.
Moved by Trustee Husgro.
I just see where it says, "I've signed the bill." It's got to be an oversight.
And seconded by Trustee Penfield. Any other discussion of the bills? It also says all three.
Where? Go five or three? Go three?
Just a minute.
Okay.
No other discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
See how bad it is in oversight.
Okay, correspondence.
We have a letter from Montgomery Hose, Hook and Ladder. Company number one, it was addressed to the Honorable Mayor and Village Trustees. We wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved for our company for a probationary period of six months. Joseph Crone, Theo Box 373, Albert, Vermont. Please act on this member as soon as possible. Thank you for your time in this matter. Respectfully yours, Sean Shagman, Secretary.
I'll make a motion to accept him.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Moore, in Scotland. There being no Scotland, all is in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
In the next letter, we have, it was addressed to the Village Board. It's from Mary Nahtel, who retired as of last Friday. Many thanks to all of you for the gift, plaque, party, and your support. I look forward to this new chapter in my life. My best wishes to all of you. Signed, Mary. And that's all there is.
Thank you, Phil. The report of the mayor and the board trustees. First thing on my agenda is the NICOM Winter Legislative Meeting of February 27th to March 1st. And I will be tending, and Phil will be attending. Anybody else want to attend? I need a motion.
Move it. I'll second that.
Moved by Trustee Husgro, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all is in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. We have, I have a resolution. Notice is hereby given that the board of trustees of the Village of Ross's Point, Lake County, New York, have on the 3rd day of January 2005, pass of the resolution setting point, the voter registration date for 2005 village election, a copy of the complete resolution as follows. It is set for February 16th, beginning at 8:30 and ending at 4:00 p.m. At the village office, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Village Office, 139 Lake Street. I'm not reading the whole thing, this is standard. This is a roll call vote, and I put that form of a motion.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Trustee Penfield, roll call vote, Trustee Husgro.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Second resolution I have. Whereas the Village of Ross's Point, the town of Albert, Vermont, have jointly agreed to participate in the grant application through Lake Champlain Basin program, the amount of $2,000. The purpose of this is to identify and interpret the signs for old, identification and interpretation signs for Old Fort Montgomery at its Isle Point. And whereas it is desired that both communities to place interpretive panels at each end of the Old Ross's Point-Albert Bridge Approach. And whereas the Village of Ross's Point will act as lead agency if the grant is awarded, therefore, be resolved, identification of the stone structure, excuse me, would provide an understand of its historic value, it plays as a stance in the curtail location of this famous Warpath of Nations. Further be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Ross's Point will not be approved to support this grant application, Lake Champlain Basin program. This resolution to take effect immediately. And I put that form of a motion. Second. Moved by the mayor, seconded by Trustee Husgro, roll call vote, Trustee Husgro.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And that takes care of that for you, Roger.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to talk about it?
No. If you have any questions, I'll, I came to answer them. If you don't.
I just had a question about the, where would be placed, if we were to do this? Is it going to be on the side of the road where the bridge approach starts?
The Albert folks have an ideal location, looking right at the fort, in that pull-off area over there. Ross's Point, I, actually, I would ask you that, I think. The best location, I mean, the best viewing location is from the end of the old Causeway. In fact, the picture, that, a picture from there appeared in the Lake Champlain Weekly a couple of weeks ago. I spoke with Jody Malloy, she mentioned that maybe vandalism is a problem down there. The Basin Program folks seem to stand, said they stand by their signs, not that they can't be damaged and destroyed, but to me, that's the best, I mean, that's a place where you can look at the sign and see the fort. If you people felt it needed to be closer to the power techs gate, or the Fort Montgomery Estates gate, that's your decision. I think, I leave that to you folks. If you thought it was safe on the end, out, you know, out there, I think, but I'd leave that for your decision.
Think I'll just let, let that go for the committee, the committee that can discuss that. It's important for Saturday's discussion.
No, it would be helpful, as you said, to be able to move the fort at the same time.
I drove out on the end and took the picture, and it's, you know, I've taken lots of them from every angle there is, from the air. Jim Mallard's website, Historic Lakes, has probably the best story about the fort that's ever been written, using John Ross's material and lots of other people's material, the pods material. So, and we have lots of images. And what, and what I do want to share with you is that when they, when we come up, working with the Basin Program folks, folks, come up with a prototype image, or a sample, then I would like to come back here and have you folks view it, rather than just say, "This is what we want." You're sponsoring this, you need to have input to it. And so, at that point, I will come back with a, with a, one of their drafts, and, and we can talk about it and make changes if, if you would like. I think it's long overdue.
Oh, no.
And I've been gone from here for 40 years, I still think it's overdue.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
You're all set on that. I have a bid, a bid opening on the salt of the own end, the 18th gas generator, and the 300 gallon fuel tank. I'll write us, you get $76 to John Bernard, $150, $90 on the generator. On the fuel tank, one bid, North Country Medical Group, $100. I need a motion to award that.
I'll make a motion to accept the high bid on the 4K gas generator, $150.99 to John Bernard. And also, leaving the motion to accept the bid from the North Country Medical Center for $100.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Jefferson to accept high bid, seconded by Trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all is in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me. Trustee Husgro.
Mr. Mayor, you're not going to bring up the most conference on the 21st? The two in the, Ms. Heer, right, with him?
I'm sorry, missed that. I thought we approved that.
You did the letter.
This is the.
NICOM?
Notice of conference, depending.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I need a motion to attend a conference in Albany for the administrator and myself on the 21st, and about litigation.
Do you have it?
Second.
Second, uh, motion by Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Penfield. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all is in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Trustee Husgro, for reminding me, I guess, I missed it. Okay, Trustee Husgro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Discussion road salt. We said we'd bring it back up at the first meeting in, in January, and I'm disappointed to find that the sidewalks have been sand, have been salted without using a mixture since that time. And I don't believe that was part of the resolution that we, the discussion that we had. I also have distributed some more articles to you about the effects of road salt on the environment. And I think that we should continue using a mix all the time, except for extremely
Well, just from a personal thing, I noticed that the sidewalks, there's a lot of ice on the sidewalks. And if just one person falls and cracks their head, it's going to be a big time liability for the village, so.
Well, then that goes to tell you, they're putting 100% salt on the sidewalk, and it's not doing it. Or if you had a mixture of sand, at least it would provide a green surface, surface.
I think it's just freaky weather. This is January, it's not freezing.
It could be, but the salt didn't take care of the problem, and that's what they viewed as, is 100% salt on, on the sidewalks. In addition to which, of course, it's going to destroy the cement.
I think we should look into alternatives.
Something, there are new products being, Doug, do you feel there are any of the new stuff that's, that's come out?
No, unfortunately, I haven't checked into that.
I see all the state cars that are equipped with to put down liquid.
I can inquire and see what options are available.
It seems to me there is a product that is available, I don't know how widespread it is yet, that's using medicinal matter, maybe corn, or something that they use.
All right, I'll look into that. We'll back to the stick thing.
Cornstalk, no, sorry. That's Mr. Mayor.
Don't move the cornstalk.
Anyway, I would like to accept it, accept it a real emergency, continue using a 50-50 mix. And, you know, if we go right into a situation where we're not doing it sometime, like a nice storm like last night, well, then we have to look at it.
So we leave it up to the side, is needed or not?
Well, as long as it just isn't, you know, it's convenient to put salt on today, so that's what we'll do. You know what I mean? I think it ought to be based on the situation.
So if the person's going to download it, if they can?
Well, I suppose it really has to be.
What's our, what is our ultimate goal in treating the sidewalks?
What is the ultimate goal?
Yeah.
Well, I would assume it's so that people can walk on them safely.
Right.
I don't know if we have another goal.
Right, but I guess that, I know what we discussed last time was that we would have to leave it up to the operator, the plow, to determine, you know, I think an emergency situation indicates that maybe we're not keeping them passable so that people can walk on them safely all of the time. In other words, I still, I still believe we have to leave it up to the operator and the equipment, in their best judgment. If they're plowing and the mix is not keeping the sidewalks clear of ice, then does that qualify as an emergency?
I don't think you've heard me before. They aren't using a mix, they're using strictly salt, and it's not doing the job.
Then, then a mix isn't going to do the job either.
Well, a mix will provide a layer of grit, which will help people. Whereas just the salt isn't.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I have found that the sidewalks actually have not been that bad.
I don't think the sidewalks have been that bad most of the time, but.
We have had some extreme weather, like Brian said.
One thing that I found like today, my driveway, is completely clear rice. I spread, you know, calcium, whatever it is, not salt, but, you know, white beads. And within a half an hour, it's all like honeycomb, you have to walk shovel. You just can't leave it there, because then it, it honeycomb it. But you got to get rid of it.
I understand.
And I think that was the problem we had on the sidewalk that it done, but it didn't honey, the honeycomb was there, but nobody bothered to shovel it off. And I, and I think they expect us to do that, and I don't think we can, you know, we don't have the time or the manpower.
Well, we didn't have any snow overnight, however, the sidewalk flow was out cleaning things up this morning.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, a couple of times today.
It's always going to be an issue.
I believe it is always going to be an issue.
One way or the other.
So we'll leave it as we had at the meeting in, when was it? First meeting in December? We had a 4th of July meeting before we convened tonight, and we're in absolutely excellent shape, I think, don't you, Trustee Jefferson?
Yeah.
The parade is, is coming together, the entertainment for the weekend is coming together, the, just, just everything seems to be flowing. The only problem is that we don't have a carnival. Buck, we didn't have a carnival last year, we had a huge drop, so if we don't end up getting one, we're still going to have a good time together. More young people activities lined up this year. Craft show will be back. We have some additional food vendors that have requested to be part of the weekend. And I think we're in good shape.
We'd like to throw it out to the public that if somebody's got an idea for the 4th of July, that we would welcome their idea. So if there's something else we can add, you know, you'd like us to add, you know, we'd be interested in doing that, so.
And the last thing is, this Saturday, the Steering Committee for Downtown Revitalization will be holding an all-day workshop, and I'm going to ask Melissa Madas if she would address that for a second.
Sure. We are holding our long-awaited downtown and waterfront revitalization design and visioning workshop on Saturday. It's going to be held at St. Patrick's Church basement from 9:00 to approximately 3:45. We need to clear the parking lot in time for church at 4:00. There is no need to register ahead of time, the doors will open at 8:30, and you can just come in then and register, have a cup of coffee. We are providing lunch, thanks to the efforts of the Steering Committee and board members, village staff. Thank you to Mary Raska, who's coordinating the efforts to get lunch together for everyone. We did have nice articles in the Press Republican, in the Islander, and also in the North Countrymen, and thank you to Shan and Ann and Mary for that. Other than that, I guess we just need to emphasize the importance of the public input. And I think everyone has heard, we have been working for about a year on the downtown revitalization. Of course, the waterfront revitalization project is much older than that. But it's certainly in terms of the downtown, everything we've done has really been preparation. I really look at this as the beginning of the process, and we're, we're going to the public and asking them to tell us what they would like to see in the downtown, and, and what also they'd like to see in the future on the waterfront. And we really hope that people will be, and we realize a Saturday is a huge commitment, but we really appreciate it if people can, can come and join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I do have one additional item. I would like to ask if we've authorized the clerk to publish a legal notice for a public hearing for Local Law 1 of the year 2005, amending Chapter 19, which is personnel policies. And that has to do with holidays and vacations and sick, sick leave. Excuse me. No, not sick leave, accumulating up to 15 days vacation from one year to the next.
I'll second that. Motion by Trustee Husgro, seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion? There being no Scotland, all is in favor, roll call, roll call vote, Trustee Husgro. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Excuse me, Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Husgro. Trustee Penfield.
First item that I have tonight is an update on what's going on with the sewer project improvement. And we had a very nice meeting this afternoon with members of Earth Summit, and also Aaron Jarvis was there, and Ernie, and, and I believe that Aaron provided everyone with a progress update to date on contracts four, five, and eight. And things seem to be progressing very well. I think Tom and Ernie are very pleased with the way that things are going, and, and we have a few other issues to work out, but for the most part, I think things are underway and pretty much on track. Aaron, do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
These topics of discussion are self-explanatory. The last couple of weeks due to the holiday and poor weather conditions, things have been a little slow. But the most important thing that has occurred is the outfall line into Lake Champlain is in place, is essentially complete with the, with the fact that we do still need to do an inspection, which will be done in spring when the water temperature goes down and Doug's crew doesn't have to freeze in the process of doing it.
Water temperature going up.
Oh, yeah, going up. And there will also be a considerable amount of cleanup to be done along the Causeway, but due to the freezing conditions, it's really not feasible to do that until spring. For that, if anybody has any questions?
Okay, and the only other thing that I have tonight is that I received a phone call from Mike Tatcher last week, and he and I were discussing the information that he sent to Tom Rene regarding the subdivision regulations for the planning board. And apparently, Tom contacted him and wants to come up and meet with Mike and myself, and anyone else who's interested in having a look at that before he actually puts the local law together. And our hope was that he would come up sometime this week, although I didn't hear from Mike today, I know he was traveling toward the end of last week, but I would expect either sometime this week or next week, Tom will be up, he'll have to be late in the afternoon, 4 o'clock or so after school, when I can be there. But if anyone's interested in attending, I'll have Phil, maybe put a note here in his box as to what time he will be here and what day it will be. And I haven't seen the final draft that Mike sent him, but I know that that's one of the things that he wants to go over with us.
Well, on that, Trustee Penfield, I hope that this board does not take the stance downboard with that subdivision thing. That is a real mess.
I don't know what their code says, so I don't really, I have no.
I hope that we don't get into that kind of a, I'm going to write for the juror, if you hadn't attended any of the meetings that they've been discussed, it's, I think it's an unjust law, but that's, that's me.
So the way their, their law is written, you think it's not right?
Yeah, I don't think that we should, we need to get into that. And I'll discuss that with Mr. Rene at the next meeting.
Yeah, so, I don't, like I said, hopefully that he'll be up at the time when, when it's convenient for him. I know it'll be a late afternoon, but he did want to go over, and I would imagine he'll bring copies of what Mike gave him with him, so that we can all get that at the same time. Along the same lines, we are still in need of two or three members to serve on the planning board, you need a total of five. And I think that we have tentatively two, possibly three right now. We have a couple of people who are still thinking about whether or not they would like to be involved. If anyone has any ideas of someone who wants to get involved in, in this, I don't imagine the meetings will be as regular as the zoning board, I don't think that they'll need once a month. I would expect they'll need maybe four or five times a year. That's kind of what Mike and I have talked about in terms of what the timing will be. So it's not a huge time commitment. It's really someone who's just interested in seeing that thing done, I think, in a good way for the village, so if anyone has any names. I know also that we appointed Timmy Lindport to the Steering Committee as a member, and he's also, you know, a member of the zoning board. It might not be a bad idea to have a member from that committee also on the planning board, if, if, you know, we think that that's a good thing, to keep kind of our master plan of the village sort of together, something else that we think about.
Takes a continuity to it.
Yeah, and, and it's a good thing, I think, for, for the different committees, the different boards who are active in the same sorts of things, to know what the other boards are doing. So I don't know if that's something, Melissa, that you'd like to speak to your, your members about, who can get a volunteer who might be interested in joining, so.
I would think that someone would be, potentially would be very interested.
Okay. So if anyone has any names, please let me know, or let Carol know, I know she's also, I spoke with her today, she's going to be making some other calls. The people that Mike and I have approached, there's been some interest, but we're still in need of two or three people, so, anyway. And that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson. Okay, I just have a couple items on my agenda tonight. The Municipal Electric Utilities Association will be having an engineering workshop on Wednesday, February 2nd, and Thursday, February 3rd of 2005. And it's going to be in Liverpool, New York. And I talked with Phil before the meeting, and Phil thinks it's important that someone from the village attends. So I'd like to make the motion tonight to allow two members of the electrical department to attend the meeting on February 2nd and February 3rd. So I'll make that motion. Second. Motion by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Husgro. Is there any discussion? Need a roll call on this, Phil? There being no discussion, all is in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and the second item I have on my agenda tonight is, I had a chance to visit the village pharmacy in Peasville. And that's the same pharmacy that's going to be opening here in Ross's Point. It's a very neat, clean, and well-organized store. It reminds me a lot of a chain pharmacy. And things are progressing quite well on the pharmacy, and when the pharmacy opens, I'm going to bring my business back to where it really belongs here in Ross's Point, and I urge all village residents to spend your money in the village, and I have your prescription, Phil, here in the village. That's all I have to report from this.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Trustee Moore.
Yes, I do have something. Finally.
Right, very well. Break him in.
Finally. Authorized clerk to publish legal notice for a public hearing for Local Law Number Two of the year 2005, amending Chapter 112, Bibel Traffic Law.
Second.
Second by Trustee. Second by trustee Penfield, any discussion?
I do.
Yep. We forgot a street. Church Street. From the village limits to Pratt Street, 30 miles an hour. From Pratt Street to Chapman Street is 25. Church Street is 276.
So you're saying Church Street from the village limits to Pratt would be 30 as well? This, you know, I can ask Mr. Renee to simply add that to the, uh, section two, which is the name of the street, so it wouldn't slow us down from having the public hearing still on the 18th.
I don't want, uh, objection, oh, yeah.
That already do?
We should do that, we should put it in there.
I agree, sure.
Roll call on this one, sir?
Yes, sir.
Motion made by trustee Moore, who seconded? Trustee, trustee Penfield?
It will be before the next meeting, right?
Pardon me?
This will be before the next meeting, is that when we're in schedule, or what?
The public hearing will be at the next meeting.
And also the other public hearing that we...
Both of my January, yes.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, trustee Huprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson. I switched you two, sir. I thought of it, but it was too late.
Okay, my second thing, authorized clerk clerk to publish legal notice to offer a bid for paving through the village of 2005, 2006 budget year.
Second.
Uh, motion by trustee Moore, seconded by trustee Penfield. Is there any discussion?
Actually, when we, I know the last time that we went out, I don't think it was this past year, it was two years ago, we, we were able to look at a list for each particular item individually, are we planning the same thing for this time?
You got it right there.
Right, in other words, but when the bids came back, we were able to look at the list for...
It will be done the same way, Carol, that's his uniform bid that we settled out.
Okay, so we can, we could potentially eliminate something that might not be...
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote, trustee Huprow, no, trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
And one more thing. Could people of the village, uh, please, when they put the garbage out or pick up, keep it off the sidewalk, because the plows that are doing the sidewalks and the sand and the salt that goes through, it interferes with them doing, if you'd like, keep it in the driveway or the garbage, then it won't interfere with removal of the snow. And that's all I got.
Thank you, trustee Moore. Reports of other people, the clerk?
Yes.
What about the bank resolution, we should talk?
That, I don't have anything, but, uh, Treasury Letourneau, um, asked me if I would bring this resolution before the board, uh, what it is, is it because Marion O'Tell has retired and Becky Diso is now our deputy treasurer, it's necessitating of the change of names on our bank, um, checking account, savings accounts with the bank, and, uh, this resolution will alter and change that, simply, it's simply that, nothing more. It's quite a long and belabored resolution, but, uh, I believe all of you have had a copy of it and have seen it, it's nothing unusual. He just asked me if I'd bring it before the board, if somebody would move it.
Would. I'll second that. Moved by trustee Huprow, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, roll call, vote, trustee Huprow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Oh, one, one last thing, our first, it's been agreed, I believe, by everyone on the board, that our first budget workshop that was scheduled for, originally scheduled for Saturday, January 15th, is now going to be held on Jan, Friday, January 14th at 4:00 in the village office. I'm doing a press release for that, it'll be going out probably tomorrow or Wednesday, so just kind of everybody mark that on your calendars, and I will put a reminder in everyone's inbox, okay? Thank you. We have, uh, we're, we're coming up with an agenda for these, what I call the, what our sen calls the specialty items, um, which you'll be getting early next week. Uh, if you, if you think of anything aside from what we've already discussed, or if anyone has specific things that they want before, we'll put it on the agenda to discuss. But I think we've got pretty much everything that we're looking at, we're talking beautification, we're talking the, uh, paving issues, um, signage, and so on and so forth, but if anyone, anyone has anything specific, we can add it, okay? That's all I have.
Thank you, Phil. And of course, the treasury is amongst the missing, and Melissa, you are next on the list.
Thank you. I, I wanted to start off by letting the board know that our scenic byways grant application has been submitted. There's a copy in Phil's office available, should any of you like to take a look at it, and I, I really would like to thank Janet Kennedy at Lakes to Locks, um, Lisa Nagel and Jared Tadic from Alon, and, uh, all the other people that helped me with the information to put this together. On the same lines, uh, just as I got rid of this one, we were bombarded by emails today from Albany. There is a new, uh, quality community grant that has just been announced. It, I heard last week it was coming, and it, it is here now. It's their QC grant, their quality community grant, the same one that funded our 20,000 grant, uh, that we received last year. It has no local match, and it is for, uh, planning efforts and implementation monies to try to move the downtown revitalization process along. And, uh, at this point, the, the main categories are improving visioning, revitalizing the downtown, and protecting open space. Um, if the board is interested in submitting the application, uh, I'd like to speak to Paula Marshman from the Department of State when she comes, uh, to the visioning on Saturday, to talk to her about some ideas about where we might go with this, and have some options for you for the next board meeting. So if you're, you're okay with it?
Here's your word.
Very good. And, uh, the other... That's right, it specifically mentions the QC demonstration community, so I think we would be very well poised to be funded again. I, I would think another small out-and-out grant is what we probably could expect. Um, just a quick update on the boat launch project. We are waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers permit. We have hit a, a minor snag in that the Maritime Museum sent a last-minute letter to the Army Corps of Engineers with concerns for the underwater archaeological value of the waterfront along Montgomery Street. Um, the Corps of Engineers forwarded to SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office. We are working on that. Jim Abdulla, our engineer, has contacted the SHPO directly, he was going to call the Maritime Museum today to try to work through whatever objections they may have. Depending upon how that comes out, kind of best case to worst case, perhaps they'll drop their objections, uh, we might have to put together evidence of previous disturbance, and certainly that waterfront, it, it has been more than, uh, the site of human activity for 200 years, so there's no problem, I think, showing that a lot has gone on there, but that can be a rather laborious process, so if we can avoid it, we would like to. The worst case would be an underwater archaeological survey, if SHPO decided to require that of us. Jim is opti...
We're not going to be disturbing anything.
I know.
They're not going out?
I know, George, I know, I, I...
And I thought we went through that once.
This is the, this is the permitting that has been going on for, I was close, close to a year, and it, this really was, this was an under-the-wire letter that came in at the end of August, SHPO's been deciding what to do, we still don't have anything in writing from them, but they're, they're deciding what to do, that Jim is hoping that when he explains to them about the project and about, now, this is, the pier was built in the 19-teens, and we're, they're saying shipwrecks, they'd have to be rowboats in the 20s, or we would have, I mean, we, we had...
We've got a video of Joe's, there ain't nothing down there.
And you know what, I thought of that as, as I was sitting and hearing Doug, the idea of Doug's crew going in the water, we'll offer that video. So, I mean, I'm, he's optimistic that we can work something out and that will not delay us, but it, in my very limited dealings with people working on other projects, we have two agencies that are, um, well-known for perhaps taking a little time getting these things going along.
They need some help, I can contact John McHugh on Corps of Engineers. I have done that in the past, and we got quick results.
Okay, well, the, the good news seems to be that SHPO itself does not have great concerns, if it hadn't been for this last-minute letter from the Maritime Museum, they'd already signed off, they had already cleared it, so we're optimistic. I'll, I'll keep you informed. And if, any other questions the board has, just let me know.
Luckily, we can let, uh, we can let them people dive down and make them pull that speaker.
Oh, no, don't, don't say that, it'll turn into an artifact.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
Doc, you got anything tonight?
I was just briefly, um, as Aaron said, the last couple of weeks due to weather and the holidays have been, been rather slow, but any construction activity that warranted monitor, we've had Eric and, or Ken Clancy out there looking at it, and I've been working a little bit with Phil on some easements along, uh, Champlain Street for the new drugstore and, uh, dentists, and, uh, but we'll be picking back up on full swing here this week. No questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Open the meeting to the public at this time. No one wishing to address the public at this time, I called that section, and we are ready for adjournment against vote votes. No executive sessions. Amazing.[1786.32]